I'm gonna start off on that and you will allow me to use the background of what has happened to the last council meeting.
Can you say it?
Does your microphone work in there?
Is the microphone here?
It's barely here.
Okay. All right. At the last city council meeting, the council voted and directed staff to come back to the council tonight with a resolution that would place on November 3rd ballot an advisory vote on the question of coordination. And the advisory ballot should go to all residents or all voters in the city as well as to the PUD water customers who receive or do water in the city. And so with that instruction, then there were a couple of things we had to accomplish. One is to write the ballot title, write the ballot question, write the explana, explanatory statement. Those things were relatively easy and you have in your packet tonight a proposal resolution which does that. The one thing that we learned, we were not able to, is to include the PUD water customers in that advisory vote on November 3rd. Now, I talked directly to the attorney, the assistant attorney general with the election divisions at the state. I also talked in a meeting with the county assessor and the county attorney. And I will say that they were very helpful. I feel that the county folks sincerely tried to find a way to make that happen. But the bottom line is that it is not practical to include the PUD. And so we cannot give you what you asked for if they'll ask you, you can't provide it. The best we can do is to give you some alternatives. And so that's what we are trying to do tonight. And if you want to take a look at the, in the packet, there's one page that is referred to as the PUD water customers. And that gives you a brief explanation of what I just told you. You cannot include them in the ballot that goes out for the November 3rd general election. So we included some alternatives. Now let me tell you this, so we include, in this, we include three alternatives. And as I sit here thinking about it tonight, there are actually four alternatives. One alternative, and the one that's not fun here, is to don't do the advisory ballot. The second one is do the advisory ballot but don't include the PUD customers. The third one is to do the advisory ballot for the city and find some other informal method to poll the PUD customers. And the fourth one is just to forget about the general election and by our own poll or everyone, the city and the PUD customers. So those are the alternatives that we've come up with. Now I will tell you that I did include in the packet a resolution that has a ballot title, that has the ballot question and the statement that's required to put it on the general election ballot for November 3rd. In that resolution, that polls, that applies only to city customers. So that's where we are and we begin tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I want to thank staff for their work on our recommendation last week. I made a motion and I want to commend council member Wytham for asking that the PUD customers be included since they, a portion of their water comes from the city. However, that motion was incorrect. The state auditor, the state assistant attorney general, they told us that that is incorrect. The motion that we made and passed was not legally possible and it was incorrect because it was made on some premises at the last meeting that did not turn out to be true. So this evening I would like to ask for reconsideration of my motion because it was not correct and cannot be carried out. And also because I have asked for additional information on letters that the city has received from the PUD and those letters have been sent to the council, but they show distinctly that the PUD disapproves of having some amount of fluoride in their water that they purchased from the city. And I think it's so important that on the topic of an election that we be as fair as possible. And I would hate to put the city in a position where we'd be exposed to litigation or have the appearance of a bias either way. So since the motion was incorrect and cannot be carried out by the county auditor, I do ask for reconsideration by the council this evening.
Okay. Mr. Moore, can you address council member Kidd's concerns about illegal activity that was conducted last week?
There were no illegal, there's nothing illegal happening last week. The council simply asked for something that is impractical and cannot be carried out. But it's just nothing illegal.
Well, thank you, I stand corrected. But what it was not, we're not legally able to carry out was what I was saying, that we don't have the authority to carry out what we asked you to do.
Well, thanks, that is correct. There's nothing illegal.
No, it's not illegal, but we don't have the legal authority to do what we tried to do. So I certainly stand corrected on the wording, but it was an incorrect motion. Thank you.
Well, I don't think trying to be inclusive is being illegal. The fact is, it's difficult to achieve that particular goal, it's something that I think we can address the staff and have them work through. I know I had an opportunity to speak with the general manager of the PUD this afternoon and the commissioners are interested in finding a way to allow the customers that receive city water to participate in the advisory ballot. I think they should have willingness to work with the city and the county to try and find a way to make it happen, whether it be a direct distribution through their utility bills or whether we give a few extra dollars to the county auditor's office to help us develop a way to contact them. To simply say that because the, a number of years ago, they voted to, against the authorization of water is no different than the ballot that was taken in 1975 by the citizens of Port Angeles that said that they were uninterested in authorization. So I don't think that will take very long, but I don't really too support to rescind of the motion.
I think the motion to reconsider is appropriate and anyone who voted for the motion can ask for reconsideration.
His motion ends, your second.
Second.
Moving second for the discussion.
I'd like to take the mic here this time. We spoke passionately about the people having to say what is provided in their water to them. This has been a long time coming, a lot of discussion. I think we owe it to the folks in Port Angeles to, again, let these doctors from each side tell their story to the population rather than the seven of us, including council member Gates that's not here. But I just think that, again, I feel that I'm not qualified to say yea or nay on fluoride. I would rather, I feel much better letting the people decide on this subject.
Can we have a clarification of this reconsideration? What is exactly, does that mean? Are we reconsidering it as yea or nay?
Or is it a draw motion?
So what motion exactly is being moved on?
The motion to, since I made a motion that was incorrect, then I want to reconsider the motion.
So specifically that the PUD get included, is that the motion? What is the exact motion that's gonna go away?
The motion to hold the advisory ballot.
And advisory ballot. Advisory ballot and PUD.
And include the PUD. So the only part that's, that was, that is not practical is getting the PUD included? Or she wanna pull the whole motion, saying my motion was incorrect? So would we not do it? Okay.
So if I may, reconsideration simply means that you would reconsider the same motion if you were, and I'm not sure, I'm not trying to put any word on this. So if you wanna reconsider the same motion, you could certainly do that. If you wanna make a new motion, brand new motion, you could certainly do that too. You don't, again, I'm not sure what's trying to be accomplished here, but so you can reconsider the old, you can make a brand new.
I think we're looking to reconsider this, we will say, if it passes, we will go back and reconsider the motion to pull the public and take two motions to make that happen, reconsideration, take the back of the, reconsideration of the motion to support the advisory vote.
I'd actually ask council member Kidd, what are your intentions here?
We put forth a motion that cannot be accomplished according to the way that we put forth that motion.
Is that in account of trying to include the PUD customers?
Correct.
So that would actually be the only portion that you'd like to reconsider?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be fair under this, I feel that.
Do you actually wanna undo our prior council action and?
Take it away from the people.
It, we can't, our motion was incorrect, we can't carry it out.
I understood what you said, but I don't understand your intentions. You wanna reconsider only the part of having PUD vote on this advisory ballot?
We need to reconsider the motion, we cannot legally, we cannot, the county auditor will not accept.
Mr. Mayor.
Actually, I believe they would. We could simply fix that by saying any and all customers that receive water from the city of Port Angeles in any of the precincts served by our water system. Pretty simple.
I don't believe that's correct.
That's not correct, sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Right.
Mr. Wytham indicated he wanted to have people weigh in on this. Option three in the memo is much more inclusive than what is being suggested by an advisory vote. And since we would likely do that with the PUD customers, it seems to me we, if we insist on asking the people what they think, that option three is more inclusive, it includes all the residents of the city and those in the PUD and not just the voters.
I would address that, council member Collins, that the auditor, the assessor would actually count the votes of registered voters. It would be beyond our control as a city council or a city staff member to deviate from what the actual registered voters say, are trying to say to us. I would support working with the PUD, informing a panel of a civic group here, maybe the legal women's voters to get involved and to oversee that, working again with city staff and PUD staff. So I really think that this has to have a hands-off approach, that we have to, at the end of it, listen to what the people say.
I'd like to weigh in on this. The staff came up with three options. Do not poll, you know them, to go ahead and poll them and do on the same day, so that everything's due the same day, but it's more informal, right? And then the other ones is to skip the whole election. So I think actually.
No, it's not to skip the whole election, it's to ask the community of people in the city and the PUD that aren't just voters, that's what it says. That's not skip.
Well, to skip the November 3rd election and conduct the advisory vote.
Right.
So we can also conduct the advisory vote and also conduct the informal advisory poll for the PUD customers with number two, right? And then have them all do until November, so that we have a result in November of what the people feel about fluoride, so that we can go into our December.
Okay, before we get too far down the road on this, this is the one we're gonna reconsider. And if that motion passes, then we get into the depth of discussion of how we wanna do that. So I'll call for the voter o's and favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
We have three no's, the motion dies, does not pass. Okay, so the motion saves.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Mr. Mayor, I believe there is no motion at this point. We don't have a correct motion, so there's no motion in front of the council.
And I think it's really a matter of semantics here. During the discussion, I think Denver, at least once, and I mentioned, yes, possible, to try to make this as conclusive as possible. And remember staff saying, when we were talking about the cost of the election, that we didn't know what it was going to cost, it was an estimate given to us at the time. And then I said, there may be additional costs if there are some special requirements in order to identify those people who receive water from the PUD. So we had that discussion and I think this issue is over, as far as I'm concerned.
Not as far as I'm concerned. We have Mr. Gates here, he and I, and I believe Mr. Downey did not approve the motion, and I don't believe the motion can be modified in the way you're suggesting it be modified.
There's been no motion on the floor to modify it, other than the one that failed.
No, the motion, the motion that was passed last week is not a valid motion, is my argument, Mr. Wytham.
Is that true? I thought you said legally, that this, we haven't done anything illegal, it just was not practical.
Correct.
Okay. Wasn't accepted by the county.
Actually, I think it would be helpful if Denver can go back and recount what the action was at the last council meeting. Can you give us your question first?
Yes, so at the last council meeting, the first motion, as you all know, was moved by council member Collins, second by council member Gates, a public hearing for December. That motion carried four, three. Then it was moved by council member Kidd and seconded by council member Wytham to have an advisory vote in addition to the public hearing. That motion carried four, three. Later on, council further directed staff to find dates in October and December for the public hearing on fluoride and to work to find a way to include PUD customers in the advisory vote. So the advisory vote, or excuse me, the PUD customers were not included in the original motion.
Okay, I stand corrected, I thought our motion was.
Council member Collins, can you hear that?
All right. Thank you.
All right, so can you? Okay, so back to what I started with, we're against the need for chair appointments. How we would see this, Mr. Moore? Mr. Keith?
The ordinary course, if we were having something other than an advisory ballot, that is something that would be binding, the ordinary course is that the city council would then appoint a committee in favor of the proposition and a committee opposed to the proposition. This is an advisory ballot, it's not something to require that you do that, but it seems like a good practice to have a committee in favor, a committee against. What most people do is they secretly write statements that would go out with the, it is done as part of the way of their election, they can go out with the voter's pamphlet. It is done as just a mail-out effort, it would just go out with the information that we sent out to everyone. But anyway, you get the camp in favor and the camp opposed. And so that's what the committee appointment took before. And you don't have to appoint the whole committee, you can appoint a chairman of the pro, chairman of the con, and they can solicit their own, gather up their own committee.
Do we have to appoint or can each of the groups do that on their own and submit that on their own?
Well, you at least have to appoint PUD pro group and get a con.
Do we, we have to do that?
Well, let me interject a little bit. As Will said, this is an advisory vote, you don't have to, but there's an advantage of doing that because, and now I'm gonna take a little bit further, because one of the things that council did is that they voted on having a public hearing and of course having the advisory vote and then come back with an additional public hearing. The first public hearing, and I'm just throwing this out for discussion, but the makeup of the first public hearing, that's one of the things that some point needs to be decided. It makes sense since it's prior to the vote, that that public hearing be an educational forum, not just for the council, which it typically is, but also for the community that's gonna vote on it. So if you have appointed a chair of a group that's for the pro and the chair against, you might, and this is just throwing it out there, you might say, as a makeup of that public hearing, the first half hour, for instance, and I'm just throwing times out, but the first half hour, for instance, where then a little flip coin for who goes forward with the for comment and who goes forward with the against. And that, it's up to that committee that's for, you know, and the chair is the first logical step in forming that committee. And then they're, that they can develop then how they wanna make their half hour presentation. They can have people, anybody they want to do that presentation, each side is equal time. Then after that, you can take, you know, get the public in the public hearing and obviously with this issue, you're gonna wanna put generally some kind of side words on that, how you do that. But again, it makes sense that you have that information that goes out, not just in the voter's pamphlet or the information informal to PUD. The exact same information goes to everybody. But also, it can be very helpful how you decide to set up the public hearing.
So I guess I'd look to cover to who would want to do the pro side and who would want to be in the inside or who wants the fluoride, who wants.
I believe there has been some preliminary work on that and with that preliminary work, I believe that, and correct me if I'm wrong, had Elise Galen on the against and Dr. Locke on the for side, that they both have agreed, I think, have agreed that they would do that and then they can get their committee together and start working on those issues. But I think it'd be very helpful if tonight the council did discuss also a little bit of what the expectation of the public hearing is, because it would be potentially unofficial to, in that first public hearing, to do it in an educational format where people can come and get more information prior to the vote.
So do you need a resolution to appoint these folks? Is that a vote? Roll with that.
I'm starting to motion there, a couple nominations, Dr. Elise Galen of the con, Dr. Council of the pro. Is there a motion? I would give a motion.
I'll second that.
Yes, start it. Moving second, this is for the discussion.
Would that information also be put into the ballot, into the voter's guide, excuse me?
The information they developed will be put into voter guide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Most favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Motion passed. Thank you. Congratulations to the two, you have a lot of work, have you mixed up with us?
We also wanna discuss a little bit of the format, like he said, you know, whether it's 30 minutes for each side. I mean, I would love also to hear from both sides, what are the options that are available to each side if they fail?
Anybody talking about that later, we get to the public hearing portion of the agenda.
I think that's up to the pro and con side.
And the PUD water customers, what does the council want to do about them? We've given four options. I agree with the discussion earlier, I think this option is to conduct the advisory vote and then to work with PUD on an informal ballot. And allowing them to have some voice in the decision of whether to continue forwarding water.
Mr. Mayor, my concern there is that city staff or PUD staff not be involved with the direct counting of these ballots. That's where I'd like to see a civic group get involved with, maybe it's just the counting of the ballots at that time.
I can probably, since we have discussed this and maybe alleviate some of your concerns, council member Wytham, the, one of the options we may look at, and I do agree, because I think it's important that the community knows as a third party, that's highly respected at councils. I think the preferred option would be, and we have not talked at county, but the preferred option would be, we know that it, due to the practical difficulty, the auditor's office cannot do a similar ballot in that limited area like we can in the city. But what might be able to occur if there was a good way to ensure that there are easily identifiable cell address envelopes that went back, that went to the county auditor's office. They could put them in a secure location, then they could provide the county what they probably would charge the city, it's just for the cost of the hours involved in that, but shouldn't be too great, I know they have an additional cost, but then at least the county's auditor, county auditor's office then may be doing that part of it. So just thinking about it, it would, probably the most important thing to them would be to be able to clearly track very easily those things that come in, so they could just put it in a secure location until it's time to count, which would be the same advice that would be for the city residents voting.
I think that would be great.
And I would support that as well, my point being, this is the third party and who better than the auditor?
Okay, we'll let staff work out the details and then come back. So what the process is going to be. All right, so moving on to the adoption of a resolution that includes a valid explanatory statement.
Okay, so if we were in the motion, we should adopt the, the resolution that you have tonight is for the city election on November 3rd ballot. If you adopt that resolution, then in the motion, you should also direct the city manager to work out the details with the PUD for the whole of the PUD residents as you have just described.
Okay, thank you. Resolution in proposed language, so resolution of the city council, the city of Port Angeles is Washington, providing for submission to the voters of the city of an advisory ballot seeking assistance regarding the authorization of the city's municipal water supply at an election. And then this is probably a council discussion, the proposed language is advisory vote under concerns of the authorization of Port Angeles water supply. The city of Port Angeles is contractually obligated to continue the authorization of the municipal water supply until May 18, 2016. After that date, authorization will continue unless the city council takes action to discontinue the practice. Should the city of Port Angeles continue the authorization of its municipal water supply at May 18, 2016, and your options are yes, no, and no opinion. Mr. Council's thoughts?
Move that as read?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have a change, I don't think it's quite accurate. We're not obligated to continue the authorization, we're obligated to the Washington Dental Services Foundation for Water Treatment Facilities providing authorization. That's what the contract is about. And so I would propose that if you do pass this, which I am going to be opposing, that it include to, obligated to the Washington Dental Services Foundation for Water Treatment Facilities providing authorization of the municipal water supply until May 18, 2016.
Mr. Mayor, the question that comes up in the motion or the resolution under consideration is after May 18, 2016. It has no mention of the dental association because the fact of the matter is, we can change who provides the fluoride if other members on this council choose to decide to go forward with that.
And I guess, if I'm okay with you wanting to change it, that the Port Angeles is contract, is contractually obligated to continue water treatment for the authorization of the municipal water. Yeah. I don't think it's that relevant.
I support the resolution as read.
Okay, so I think I understood that Bill was suggesting. I think I understood that Bill was suggesting they need to get the city manager involved with work, workmanship on the, I would, work with the P U D. And so I didn't hear that.
I think the resolution originally is just, this one's for the city of Port Angeles and then this language will go to the P U D on the.
Yeah, I was saying, are we contractually obligated after the 18th?
No. No, I'll go ahead. No, we are contractually obligated until the May 18th. We have a contractual.
Until, okay.
We have a contractual agreement with the dental bodies, but it might have been, in my thought, that's not really relevant to the question. The question is what happens after May 18th. And the fact that we're contracted obligated with a dental validation as opposed to, you know, Smith and Smith Company doesn't really make any difference. It's a contractual obligation until then. And, and from my point of view, more importantly, again, assuming that we are following the statutory guidelines for a ballot proposition, which is, I consider to be the best practice, and we're not, we don't have to because this is an advisory ballot, it's not binding, but I still consider the statutory guidelines to be the best practice follows. There's a word limit on this, and so I didn't want to be too wordy in this.
So you got a final question, a point of information? If the resolution is a pass, then can we proceed ahead?
If the resolution is not passed, then we will not proceed to the November 3rd ballot.
So the business you suggested language change.
Mr. Mayor, I've got some concerns here. So if we can't agree on a resolution here tonight, that seals that 45 days beforehand? Council's already chosen action last week.
Well, it's more than 35 days I've got to have, so they get to the printer and get the ballots, this type of stuff.
It is due.
We have a lot of support to get this language to the end.
It is due by the close of business on August 4th, which is just prior to the council meeting.
I understand, thank you.
So on your motion to pass this resolution as read, without changes in the language?
I'll second.
Move a second as per the discussion. Now, hearing all those favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Prose?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you. Motion passes. I'd like a hand vote. All those favor the motion, raise your hands. Prose? No, the motion doesn't pass. Okay.
I mean, I, I know that we have concerns, we may have a lot of them. But I remain as concerned as I was a couple weeks ago in the Armenian aspect. I remain very concerned that we will, as a result of the action of having the advisory ballot, politicize in a manner that needs not be politicized. I think we need to firmly root this discussion in an empirical discussion, if you will. And I still remain concerned about opening up a discussion that will just, and ultimately perhaps we remain as divisive as our committee is already. And we, I am solidly in favor of the, and I'm appreciative of those of you who have supported that, the public hearing before the ballot. I think that's the right direction we should go. And I'm beginning to struggle with the concerns.
Mr. Mayor? Yes? I think we should continue ahead with what was the for and against committee and the appointments and have that information put forward to a public hearing, whether that public hearing was on one of the dates, in October or December. I, I support that. That's the next item on our agenda, is the public hearings.
So.
Originally, we're going to have it prior to the election in October, but with a follow-up in December, which I, we argue would be, we're going to have the election, would not be necessary, but when would the council like to have the public hearing?
What's the purpose of this, may I ask, Council member called?
I think it's to educate the council and educate the general public on the issues.
We, we've talked about education before. Again, I'll repeat what I did say last week. You've been on the council much longer than I have. You've listened to different aspects of this argument, longer than I have. It, again, took me several years to become a plumber. I don't want to become a dentist or a doctor. I'm awfully disappointed with council's actions tonight. I, I joined the council with the, with the thought of having my voice count and in order to enable the people to have their voice counted. This isn't vaccines. This is an individual disease. It, it, you know, vaccines do have their point, and I would definitely support something like that, but this is an individual's right. There are people in our, that receive our water, that, that have adverse effects of this. I do think that if we're going to continue on with an education, that it should culminate with the people being allowed to vote, whether they want this in their water or not. Again, I feel part of democracy has died here tonight with this action.
Okay, do we want to have the public hearing?
Like I said, I'd want to have it in October, given the option. And I, I must tell you that in general, I totally back up the science about fluoride helping teeth, but I know that there are options out there. And I know that most of Europe does not fluoridate their water. They have, they either have salt that you can sprinkle on there, there's the fluoride pills, there's a lot of different options. I also know that a one size fits all type of solution, where if I drink three glasses of water and she drinks six glasses of water, I know this is going to change a little bit, you know, as well as little kids, as well as adults. So, and, you know, the one thing that this whole discussion hasn't gotten to is the source, I mean, the real basis of dental decay. We haven't talked one iota about the nutrition, you know, and I noticed, and I took a good look at that medical poster that said, you know, you have teeth, you eat, you have, you eat, and in the pictures were a soda, a donut, of a, you know, this very sugary drinks, you get acid and you get dental decay. Why aren't we not talking about the nutrition and what could prevent it? The Native Americans of this area didn't have to, you know, brush their teeth with fluoride. It was the nutrition, and they had excellent teeth. So why aren't we talking about that? Anyway, so, so much for my summary. So I would like this, I guess I do have a question for Councilor Lebo. So we had a motion that said we wanted this advisory vote, but we haven't agreed on the language. Is that something that we need to have another council meeting to see if we can agree with the language and see how folks, I mean, we're missing one of the folks here as well, so I'm not sure. Do we need, do we just say, okay, well, that advisory vote is totally gone? Or do we come together and figure out another way of getting some language that people can agree to?
Prior we have two mandatory to the council, but the prior four, if you want to.
I, I would go with the idea that prior council actions supported this making the advisory vote on November 4th ballot. So I would actually assume then, since we can't agree to it, that staff at this time would take over and support our prior actions.
Well, the staff cannot adopt a resolution. It has to be a resolution from the council because.
And it's not the language that we've not supported, we've not supported the resolution, which included the language.
Okay. Well, we had a resolution for the advisory vote, we had the resolution that supported the advisory vote. I think.
It's a resolution, I suppose.
Okay.
You have just a motion so far.
So at this point, and I don't know how Mr. Case would vote, but does that mean that it looks like it's a dead, you know, it's dead on arrival? Okay, so if it's dead on arrival at this point, then let's just move with the October hearing, because I don't think there's anything we can do.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you just said.
I'm just saying that if we are going to not have, if this resolution cannot pass where everybody sits today, then we don't have a choice but to move forward and have the hearing, the public hearing in October.
So we want to have a hearing in October? Okay, we have two proposed dates, October the 8th and October the 1st. Both of them are Thursdays. Which is the preference of the council? I would prefer October 1st, because sooner than.
I was going to say October the 8th, because I'm maybe out of town.
But if, I, if it's married me, I can be a preference.
I, I would prefer October 1st myself, in case other meetings are planned.
Let's, let's talk about council calendars. Are we all available on October 1st? Or the 8th, which one works for us? Because I, I really would like all of us to be there.
I'm missing my calendar, since the oldest meeting, I hope I didn't leave it open. No, we're not going to move forward with the vote. Is this really time critical? What are we going to do with this in future council meeting? So we have a chance to do it, because this is the first time this evening we've seen the proposed dates. And, and I would suggest that we check our calendars and then next Tuesday, when we come back from our regular council meeting, that this be part of that agenda, we determine the data. And next Tuesday, because if someone hasn't checked their calendar, it's difficult for us to commit to a date this evening. And it's not time critical any longer, so. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
The council, you ready?
I, I'd like to have full counsel here for the public hearing.
Okay. Is there a need for a second public hearing in December? I know we have a motion that includes both of those, but I still question.
I made the motion for Mr. Case's second, so I think we should, I guess, you know, put it easier.
Okay, so we have that, well, next Tuesday night, whether or not there's a need for a second public hearing. And then we can talk about the format, so we'll do that tonight, or you want to do that next Tuesday night?
Let's do it next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Okay, we're going to get busy again next Tuesday, that's for sure. All right, that concludes all of the business for tonight's special meeting.
All right, mayor, council. Just so that, that we can be real efficient at the next meeting, what, unless I hear otherwise, what we will do is come up with multiple options for that public hearing. But the one thing that would be helpful, if you could give us the month that you're looking at for the first public hearing, behind that November's question of the second one, if you gave us the, at least the month that you're considering.
Well, she did, essentially, we want to do something October.
Then we can bring you multiple dates to look at for your calendar.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if, if we conducted an informal vote, would it still require a resolution?
I don't have a second.
No.
Then I would direct staff to conduct an informal vote. I would make that motion.
You could direct staff.
I would make that motion, going from prior council actions. Would that need a second and go through a motion?
Are you looking for specific?
Anything that doesn't require the support of three folks that don't support a vote for the people.
What are the questions on that? You mean, when you say, you're suggesting, you say you're suggesting something?
I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting an informal vote, something that actually maybe then could be mailed out in the monthly billing, linked to a specific address that receives our water.
Is that the form of the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Any discussion? So this is option three?
This is my attempt to give a vote.
Basically, option three. I need to know. Wait, is that you what you said, Bill?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, and as a request, yes, this is basically option three.
Okay. And do you want me to speak to that? I, I say, I do something.
That's work on it.
I, I want to make it perfectly clear, that I don't, I want to hear about this matter from the public. I'm just concerned that we don't become ourselves inadvertently, or potentially, a subject of a large discussion, well beyond perhaps even our control, where we sort of become ground zero, if you were, for a general discussion of this matter. I'm just concerned that if we were to have had a full general election and visibility and the subject would, is concerning to me, but am I not interested in your opinions or anybody else's thoughts? Yeah, but you actually know, know true. I, I feel comfortable with the, with the, what do you call it? Informal ballot, I guess? No, I would, yeah, so I, so many quickly things. I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I think that would minimize, well, the simultaneously solicited pay amongst ourselves as a community. But it would also, though, I think, minimize the chances of this politicizing, it makes this a totally popularity contest, inviting people who won't even live anywhere close to this area. And we just, I, I just, I think the combination would, I'd be comfortable with that. I hope that makes sense. Good?
Yeah.
Can you carry on?
Can you describe what that, what, what you need to handle? So tell us what we're getting.
My motion is actually in support of what staff prepared. I'll read the number three option, which is our, our agenda tonight, our pamphlet, is to skip the November 3rd election and conduct the advisory vote entirely by mail with a return deadline convenient to council. Potential advantage of option three is that it includes registered voters and residents who are not registered as.
Note that we make a concerted effort, make a concerted effort to have our city manager and those of the, help in to get the P U D, the those in the, P U Ds in their farms, get involved in it. Again, make sure that they follow simultaneously with our, with our mayor. Somewhat things at the same time, the results are brought into us, there's a deadline for it to be returned, if you will. We have to look at all of it at the same time. I would suggest also that the, if this is the methodology we're going to use, that they not be distributed until after the public hearing or the educational. Quite as many people have it, you know, so they don't have to release on, suggesting right October, early November somewhere in that timeframe.
And also, can I, can I suggest that we use the language that staff has already crafted that's in the resolution?
That's the other issue, too, is about language.
I would offer or suggest that we wait and consider this at, you know, our fourth meeting when the council meetings is here, and, and also that we can have as much consensus as possible with the council.
I guess if I could be just slightly a bit more leveraged, especially the reason was a different point, there's other issues in this man, good diet, healthy lifestyle, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's very good for this public hearing. I think Dr. Kennedy, I see out there, he's a reputable distinguished member of our medical community. I, I would invite you or others to, to bring to this public hearing as many people I could weigh in on the, if you want a healthy lifestyle. I would also, and I would be particularly interested in a broad, deep, sincere discussion and, and certainly, in all due respect to our here friend, the name of our business.
and, and certainly, in all due respect to our here friend, the name of Elise and others, Dr. Locke, who has spoken to us, maybe here, and I welcome it, I really think it's cool that you come here and passionate about your concerns. So I would, I would invite a broad, expert-based discussion, people that we've not heard from before. You refer to papers of the state which fellows in the medical community on both sides of this issue. We encourage the pros, the chairs, to invite others we haven't heard from before. Can I take that with you? Would be my first?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if Mr. Whitman and Mr. Downey are vulnerable, if we waited until the 4th, we could then also discuss what the language would be, do all that on the 4th.
There's a motion on the floor to direct staff to begin preparing an informal ballot.
I call for a question, Mr. Mayor. Question's been called, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye.
Close. The motion passes. All right. This concludes our agenda this evening. Thank you all for coming.
So, actually, so the language has not been cleared, it was just...